We're going to call this meeting to order for the Monroe County Council for Tuesday, November 26, 2024, here in the Nat U Hill Room at the Monroe County Courthouse. Want to welcome everyone and note for the record that here in the Nat U Hill, we have Counselor Wiltz, Counselor Crossley, Counselor McKim, and I'm Trent Decker. We have some absences this evening. I believe Counselor Iverson will be absent, Counselor Hogg, and Counselor Munson as well. All right, with that done, please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's move on to item three on our agenda, and that's adoption of agenda. I've got a couple of things, and then I'll open it up for counselors if you have items you want to amend the agenda with. I'd like to amend item nine, the Recorder's sworn perpetuation statement into item A, approving ordinance 2024-56, approving the 2025 Recorder's perpetuation sworn statement, and item B, approving ordinance 2024-58, approving 2024 Recorder's perpetuation sworn statement. Any objections to adding that item? If objections, let me know. With no objections, so ordered. I'd like to also amend item 12 to approve Resolution 2024-44, authorizing the Legal Department request to notify a region's corporate trust of a debt payoff for the convention center. Are there any objections to adding that item? Seeing no objections, so ordered. Counselors, do you have any additional changes yourself to the agenda? Seeing none, we will go to adoption of the agenda as now amended by voice vote. All counselors approving that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objecting? Please note for the record, it was unanimous adoption of the agenda. We'll move on to item four. This is public comment, and this is for public comment for items not on the agenda. I'll have a time limit tonight of three minutes per speaker. If we have anyone wishing to make a comment, you may do so here in the Nat U Hill Room. Just kind of give me a wave, and I'll know. If you're on Teams joining us, you also can make a comment. Just raise your hand, and we will know. Not seeing anyone, give it another second here. While we do, I just want to note, the Monroe County Courthouse is now bedecked for the holidays, and it's beautiful. So come by and see about a 90-foot tree. I don't know how tall it is, but it's pretty good. All are welcome here in the Nat U Hill for public comment, or just come to the courthouse and see the tree. It's the biggest ever. It's taller than Counselor Crossley. All right, seeing no public comment, we will move on from that. Again, all are welcome, so feel free to come here at any time, virtually or in person. Item five is department updates. Do we have any department head or elected official wishing to make a comment? Everybody enjoying their turkey already. No time for our turkey. All right, seeing none, we'll pass that by. We'll go to council liaison updates. Any counselors wishing to offer a liaison report? Counselor Crossley.
Just really quick, so I do have some job turkey. So the Women's Commission are looking for people to apply to be a part of it, so please visit the Monroe County's website to apply. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Any other council with a liaison update? All right, we'll move on to item number seven. This is consent agenda items.
Counsel, I move to approve the following consent agenda items. The prosecutor's request for a category transfer and fund 1,000-0660, county general child support of $5,000 from the services category to the personnel category. The employee services department request for a category transfer and fund 1,000-0309, county general employee services, of $2,231.84 from the services category, and the amount -- yeah, and the amount of $1,980.77 to the personnel category, and $251.0 to the supplies category, for a total transfer of $2,231.84. And the auditor's request for a category transfer and fund 1,000-0002, county general auditor, for of $600 from the personnel category to the capital category.
Motion of second on that, and we will start with any questions from council on the consent agenda. Right, I'm seeing none. Let's go to the public. If public has comment on the consent agenda item, you can come forward here in the Nat U Hill to the podium, or raise your hand on Teams. All right, seeing none, go back to counselors. Anything else, counselors? Let's then go to a roll call, a voice vote. I can do that on this, actually. All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, unanimous on the consent agenda. Let's move on to item eight. This is a request from the Planning Department.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution 2024-43, interlocal cooperation agreement between the town of Steinsville, Indiana and Monroe County.
Second.
And we'd like to welcome, I believe, Jackie Jellin Nesters with us, or Justin Roddy.
It's actually me.
Molly Turner again. All right, what do we need to know here?
So this is a request to approve the interlocal between the town of Steinsville and Monroe County. The interlocal provides that the Monroe County building, planning, and zoning would have enforcement authority within Steinsville, and that Monroe County regulations would be applicable therein. Monroe County would receive any fees from enforcement action, and we've actually had an arrangement to this effect previously. It just expired, so we're trying to put one back in place.
Pretty standard. Questions from council, comments from counselors? Nope. All right, let's go to public comment. If you have any on this, please come forward to the Nat U Hill to the podium, or raise your hand on Teams. Of course, we always welcome the ability to work with the town of Steinsville. All right, seeing no public comment, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Decker.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Go to item nine, which is a request from the recorder.
Counsel, I move to approve the ordinance, approve ordinance 2024-56, receiving the recorder's sworn affidavit regarding the use of the recorder's records perpet- perpet- the perpetuation fund for 2025. I know how to say it.
Second.
We want to welcome Amy Swain back, our county recorder. Good to see you tonight.
Yes, good to see you, everyone. So this is something that should be done every year, and I'm submitting my sworn statement to the council pursuant to Indiana Code 36-2-7-10.2B, in order that the Monroe County Recorder may pay a portion of the expense of the Monroe County Recorder's office for calendar year 2025 from the Recorder's perpetuation fund established under Indiana Code 36-2-7-10D, under penalties for perjury and under oath. I state as follows. The current revenue to the fund is sufficient to fulfill the statutory purpose of the fund. The technology of the county recorder's office is presently updated and at a level to sufficiently meet the statutory purposes of the fund. And the county recorder's office, the fund has a sufficient reserve consistent with the recorder's plan to capitalize the next technology or other records management upgrade necessary to fulfill the statutory purpose of the fund and the county recorder's office. And the county recorder specifically requests that a specific identifiable portion of the fund be used to pay the expenses of the county recorder's office for the following calendar year, that being 2025, according to the budget compiled by our office.
Thank you very much. We'll go to comments or questions from counselors next. Counselors, any questions or comments on this? No. All right, we'll next go to public comment on this. Pardon me, members of the public come forward here in the Nat U Hill to the podium, or raise your hand on Teams.
Yes.
I'd just like to point out that this allows, in layman's terms, this allows for a person -- a portion of the expenses for our office to the tune of $368,000 to come out of the perpetuation fund rather than out of county general. So it helps all the departments in the county.
And we appreciate that very, very much. Very important. Looks like there's no public comments on this one, and so we will now go to a roll
Counselor Decker.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
We'll go on to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve ordinance 2024-58, receiving the recorder's sworn affidavit regarding the use of the recorder's records perpetuation fund for 2024.
Second.
Anything to add on this one?
Actually, it's me.
It's you?
Let Molly handle this one. So this is a similar statement that would have been filed prior to the year of 2024. We inadvertently -- we just discovered that it wasn't filed. So this ordinance is slightly different than the one that you just passed, in the fact that it acknowledges that the statement should have been filed before 20 -- before the beginning of 2024, and that it wasn't, and that you are now approving the use of the fund. And had it been filed prior to 2024, and the same statutory conditions were met, which it was, then you would have approved it then.
Questions or comments from counselors on this? A lot of things happen in a year, and a lot of things sometimes get passed every one of us. All right.
Short staff, it was Eric, Stacy, and I running the entire office at this time last year.
Holy moly.
Yeah.
That'll do it.
I will add, we've brainstormed with Recorder Swain a way to ensure that this sworn statement is filed timely in all years to come, I suppose, and we're going to have the recorder's statement on the same time of the first reading of the budget, so that it'll just be filed with the budget.
Yeah, and that keeps us focused on staying after it from our end and helping that process. All right, other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If you have any, come forward here in the Nat U Hill to the podium, or raise your hand on Teams. All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Decker.
Yes.
Sorry, Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate everything. Let's move on to item 10. This is a Veterans Affairs request.
Counsel, I move to approve the Veteran Affairs Office request to update the Veteran Service Office slash Director's job description following the WILTS review, and to simultaneously amend the 2025 salary ordinance and fund 1,000-0012, county general veteran, account line 15115, from a PAT B to a PAT D with an effective date of 12/15/2024.
Second.
Want to welcome back here Stephen Miller with the Veterans Affairs Office, Wells County Administrator Angie Purdy, and we'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. So this item had been presented to PAC previously and recommended that it come to the council for approval. Our service director has embraced the role and is conducting a much more advanced outreach and involvement with our community, and this reclassification substantiates all of his work, and we ask that you accept this proposal for the reclassification of his job.
All right, do you want to add anything to this?
I just thank the council for their time tonight, and this really, I think Angie did a great job of summing it up. We're kind of just coalescing the job and making it go forward in a more strategic way.
All right, we'll go to comments or questions from counselors. I just, I want to echo the work, what I've said before in here about the work being done in that office. I hear about this all the time, particularly from our veterans' community, which is substantial in this county and in this state. It is magnificently huge, what this community has given to our armed services, and on the back end of that, it's incumbent on folks in our chairs and those chairs and every chair possible to make sure that we're doing everything we can to be supportive of that community. Because it's one thing to say, here's what I need you to do to get the boots on someone. It's another thing that when you're helping them get those boots off and live their lives, as they deserve so richly to do well. And I hear about all the time the good things happening in that office, and it makes me rest better. Not everything does, and I just, I'm grateful for that, and it's huge. And your assistant as well here, and it's magnificent. Not only that, but the service to the homeless members of this community who are veterans. And that right there, that statement alone, homeless members of this community is veterans. I mean, that should tell us everything that we need to know about the service being done and the need that is there as well. And so I'm grateful for that, and I think in 20, 30 years, when we look back at this office, probably be blown away by the need in the what matches that. All right, I'll stop talking. I could go on forever. All right, any other counselor comments? All right, seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If you've got them, come forward to the Nat U Hill, or raise your hands on Team.
Good evening, counselors. I'm Mary Morgan, I'm Director of Heading Home of South Central Indiana. We're a backbone organization that's working with our community partners in this region to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-repeating. I think you know that one of our initiatives is to end veteran homelessness, and I can't say enough positive about Steve Miller, Andrew Blake, and their office, and their willingness to partner, to try new things, to be leaders in this effort. And I work with other Veteran Service officers in this region. These two gentlemen are a model, and if I could replicate them in other counties, I would do it in a heartbeat. So I appreciate your support, in particular for this initiative to end veteran homelessness, but just in general for Steve Miller, Andrew Blake, and the rest of the staff. Thank you.
You very much, Mary Morgan. All right, we've got a hand raised on Teams, so we'll go to Teams next.
Hi, this is Dave Burnworth, and I've just got to recognize Steve Miller, because I worked with him in a previous life, and I had no doubt that he would be a star, because he just committed to anything he ever does. So, thank you, Stephen.
You.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments, very much. All right, any other member of the public wishing to comment, please raise your hand on Teams or come forward. All right, we'll go to a roll call vote on this.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Decker.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you all so very much. Really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. We'll move on to item 11, which is a request from the Board of Commissioners.
Counsel, I move to approve ordinance 2024-54, approving the purchase of a property. Due to the lack of unanimous vote on November 12th, this request requires a second vote.
I want to make a note here, we've got a motion of second, thank you. I want to make a note, due to a lack of unanimous vote on November 12th, this item comes back to us for second voting consideration here, just for the public knowledge. Mr. Cockrell joins Ms. Purdy. What do you want to add to this conversation?
Well, I'll add whatever you guys want, but we've talked about it pretty thoroughly at the November 12th meeting. I think this is the property that's on the northwest corner of I-69 and 46. The purpose of the property, it's about 52-ish acres, is to locate our justice system at that site, and so if you want me to talk more, I can. I know you've heard me talk about this for hours already.
So McKim would like to hear you talk more now.
No, I mean, I'm certainly going to support this. I just wanted to know if there are any updates, any new information or developments in the transaction or the process that have happened since that last meeting.
None. We expect, assuming this gets approved, something from the developer by December 1st.
Other comments or questions from counselors? Fair test, and so on that, we will go to public comment on this item. If you've got additional comments on this that's coming back to us, you may do so now. Talk to us about it, come forward here to the Nat U Hill, or raise your hand on Teams. All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Decker.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much. Move on to item B, 12B, 11B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 4811-0000 of 2018 general obligation bond capital projects, and the amount of $157,758.14 in the capital category.
I'd like to make an amendment. Somehow this has gotten flipped, and I just need an appropriation of the 157,464.07. Point oh seven. Yeah, the fund, the balance in the fund is the amount that was presented, but we actually have 200 and some already appropriated.
So Counsel, I move to amend my motion to have the total amount of the GO bond capital projects in the amount of $157,464.07 in the capital category.
Second.
All right, we've got an amendment on the original motion. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, let's do a voice vote on adoption of the amendment. If all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is unanimously adopted. We're back to the underlying motion. Ms. Purdy.
Yeah, so this was some funds that had originally been in this particular bond, but was designed and intended for next-level trails project that parks had in play, and they did not need all of this funding. So the money has been transferred back into this fund, the bond fund, however, it has not been appropriated. And it is our intention that this is going to be used. I'm meeting with Mr. Cron tomorrow to confirm all of our projects, but I believe this is to pay for the camera in the jail.
The what? Say that again?
The camera wiring.
Okay, thanks.
I thought for a second you said candle wiring, and I was like, oh.
I thought you said cable wiring.
Ms. Purdy, we may need to change that. All right. Questions, comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let's go to a public comment on this. If you have public comment, come forward to the Nat U Hill, or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Decker.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. We'll go to item 12, a request from the Legal Department.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution 2024-44, authorizing the Legal Department's request to notify a region's corporate trust of a debt payoff for the convention center.
Second.
All right, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, last Monday, not yesterday, but the week before, the Convention and Visitors Commission met, and they moved to approve the staff commencing the process to go ahead and pay the bonds off that we have on the convention center's properties, and have that payoff basically effective January 1. In order to do that, which is a great thing, I think, but there's some process concerns in the fact that they have to ask county council for an additional appropriation. That additional appropriation will be on your agenda on December 10th, but due to the advertising deadlines, we couldn't make it for today. The region's bank must notify the people who hold the bonds, they must give them 30 days' notice before they are allowed in order to refund the bonds, according to our timeline. In order to do that, I've got to send a letter to region's bank saying we are going to redeem those, which I believe is a commitment by the county to pay for something, right? And whenever we have a commitment by the county to pay for something, we need to have an appropriation to back that up. At this point, that appropriation hasn't been approved. However, we do have, I can point to the rainy day fund that has appropriations that could cover this. cover this. Don't anticipate it to, anticipate that the Inkeeper's Tax will fund all this, but I have to point to something that says, hey, I have, we have the authority to make this statement, and it's an authority that's went through you guys. In the Rainy Day Fund, there's purposes that the funds can be used for. Item number four is for any other use or purpose determined by the by the council. And so kind of this resolution is my way of coming to you and saying, hey, we really need to get this set. We really need to get it covered. I have an appropriation that I could use if if for some reason you guys decide not to approve that appropriation, but it requires you guys to understand that that's kind of the plan. Now, at that December meeting, if you said, no, don't pay from Rainy Day Fund, pay from it from X or Y or Z or whatever, you're not going to hear any objections from me. I just need to have you authorize me to send the letter so that I comply with law.
Okay, let's see. We got questions here from councilors. Counselor McKim.
Not so much a question as as a statement, just that I think this is, we've known that this is coming for a long time. I think it's a really exciting step to be to pay off that mortgage. And so I certainly intend to be voting yes here, but I I encourage, if you plan to vote yes tonight, please make sure you were intending to vote yes on the actual appropriation so we don't get stuck paying for it out of rainy day. Okay.
I I've been kind of monitoring this this week and looking for where there might be any hiccups where folks wouldn't on this end do what we need to do in the process. I've not heard of anything, but councilors, is there anything anyone wants to add?
Oh, also, I think the Council Office also advertised it for the second meeting in December. Is that correct?
Yes, we have. So we're covered for the 10th as well as the 17th.
17th, thank you. Yeah, so the idea behind that was just, you know, if we all get COVID and we can't make it or something like that on the 10th, then we have a backup plan. That that's all. That's the only reason why when Jeff and I discussed it as as the liaison for the CBC that came up.
And if for some reason we would not, everything's taken care of on the 10th, we will not meet on the 17th, just so folks know.
I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's about 917,000. I believe the additional appropriation will be for approximately 400,000 because they have already appropriated money. This is a debt debt repayment, so they already have money appropriated for that. It's just we're we're accelerating it, so we're paying the principal off early.
Yeah, Kim.
The second whereas clause in the resolution, I believe, states an amount in the that the remaining loan balance is $914,844.77.
And just, just a, this is more of a, just to say it out loud for the public benefit, I believe it was in April of this year that it triggered a you can pay things off, maybe it was before then, pay things off with no penalty. Because I remember when I was on CBC, that was something we were kind of paying attention to, was there was a date forthcoming.
I think that's correct. I don't have the the debt documents in front of me right now.
There's no penalty for early payment.
No, it it really, it is intended to do two things. One is cut off our payment and therefore not have to accrue any more interest. And two, as the CIAB gets going with their plan and process, we would then be able to transfer the property to them in a timely manner and not have to worry about about this debt.
Counselor McKim.
And just, this is really, we all know this, but just for the public's benefit, make sure everybody understands that this, the intention is to pay this out of Inkeeper's Tax. So this is not money that would come out of the County General Fund. This would be money that would be, the appropriation request will be out of the CBC General Fund, which is funded with Inkeeper's Tax, which essentially can't be used for anything else other than tourism-related expenses.
Any further comments from councilors on this one? All right, let's see if we've got any public comment on this. If you've got a comment, come forward here in the Natu Hill to the podium or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none. We'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Mr. Cockrell. All right, we'll go to item 13, Employee Services.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend the 2025 Salary Ordinance and Fund 1000-0309 Employee Services Account Line 15116 from Personnel Administrator Pat D., exempt to HR Director, exempt A. Account Line 10089 from Employee Services Assistant, Comment C., non-exempt HR Assistant Director, Pat D., non-exempt. Account Line 10024 from Payroll Administrator to Payroll Administrator Compensation and Compliance, Pat C., non-exempt. And add account line 10088, Payroll Administrator, Attendance and Benefits, 40 hours, Pat C., non-exempt. Due to the lack of unanimous vote on November 12th, this request requires a second vote.
Second.
This is a return, as Counselor Crossley said. Any discussion on this, because it's been discussed by he in the past before us? Councilors, do you want to add anything to it? Counselor McKim.
Yeah, I think everybody knows that I'm not particularly happy with the the creation of the new position here, but it is clear that the majority of the count council wants it. If I were to vote no tonight, I believe it would actually kill the, because we only have four people here. Even though I really want to vote no, I don't want to kill it because I know that y'all will just come back and bring it back again. So I don't want to make anybody go through that. So I'm going to vote yes, kind of a grumbling yes, but consider that my Thanksgiving gift to you. You don't have to come back and discuss it again.
And is that? Thank you, Counselor McKim. Is that the majority cannot be three?
In looking at Indiana Statute 36244, it defines a majority vote as a requirement that if a requirement that an ordinance resolution or other action be passed by a majority vote, it means at least a majority vote of all the elected members.
Thank you. Good to know. We, I don't think our quorum has ever gotten down this, or our members in attendance has gotten down this low yet, so that is very good for us to know. Okay. Thank you, Counselor McKim. That is, that is a fine gift to to give, and I appreciate very much your your past comments on this one, as well as what you're doing this evening, potentially with this roll call. Any other counselor comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to public comments on this. If you've got some comments, please come forward to Natu Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none. We'll go to a roll call on this one.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thanks again, Counselor McKim. Let's see, item 14 is a request from the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for new account lines, as outlined on the agenda, and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations of $56,778 in the personnel category.
Second.
We're fortunate to have with us Lori Kelly from the Health Department as well as Dr. Satterwise.
Good evening, council. So this request is just for grant funding for our Harm Reduction Specialist. This is typical grant funding that we have received for this position. One change is that this is a nine-month term, and typically it's been a 12-month grant cycle, but they're making some changes at the state, so we anticipate moving back to a 12-month, or that's our hope. But that's why there is a difference with the nine months with this grant versus the 12 previously.
Apologies, I said Satterwise. I don't know why Dr. Riderban. My apologies. There's a doctor out there I was thinking of. Questions or comments from councilors? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to public comment on this item here in the Natu Hill. If you have any, come forward or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, go to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for the creation of new position, Health Services Director, and to simultaneously amend the 2025 Salary Ordinance and Fund 1161-0000, Local Public Health Services Account Line 10177, Health Director, Health Services Director, 35 hours, Pat D., exempt with an effective date of January 2025.
Second.
So this is a new position that was created in part with Health First Indiana. So this position will oversee multiple different health services within the Health Department, including our Disease Intervention, Harm Reduction, our Maternal and Child Health Services, our new Behavioral Health and Wellness Coordinator position, so really be playing a key role in providing management and oversight for many of our different health education activities.
Questions or comments from councilors? Ms. Turner King.
I actually sent the council a memo late this afternoon regarding this agenda item. So when this Health Services Director position was sent to WIS, they wrote a memo back and they classified it as a Pat D. As Ms. Kim was preparing, or Michelle was preparing the packet for tonight's meeting, we noticed that as classified as a Pat D, the position would be supervising another Pat D position, which is usually not how our work charts flow. So we inquired with WIS yesterday afternoon regarding what could be done about this. WIS sent a new memo, which I provided to you this afternoon, and that memo provides this acknowledges that the Health Direct Services Director position is classified consistently with the other division leads, which are all Pat Ds, and that would be the same as the Environmental Health Services Director, the Public Health Preparedness Director, and the Vital Records and Administration Support Director. Further, WIS recommends that to address this issue and to maintain the department's internal rank structure and parity between the divisions, the Population Health Outreach Manager and Senior Community Health Specialist positions should be reviewed. And WIS specifically noted that there are overlapping duties between those positions and the Health Services Director position. Their initial thought would be perhaps that the Population Health Outreach Manager, when you remove those overlapping duties, the classification might change there, which would fix the rank structure issue. Therefore, you know, I would propose for consideration tabling this item until we can look at adjusting the Population Health Outreach Manager and the Senior Community Health Specialist job descriptions. One way to potentially address this issue would be to make the Health Services Director an SO. I will remind council that WIS strongly advises against making SO positions. In reviewing the PAC meeting, making this position an SO was discussed, and PAC was not in favor of it, but that is also with the caveat that they did not have this additional information of the classification. Typically, when council makes an SO position, they tie it, or they have historically tied it to another position. But in this case, you wouldn't be able to tie it to a Pat D position because it would be making the same as a subordinate, and you wouldn't be able to tie it to an EXEA because then it would be making the same as it's the person supervising this position. So you wouldn't, you would have to come up with a rate. You wouldn't be able to tie it like to a pay grid.
We've got a little bit of a mixed bag here and not sure what quite yet to do.
Yeah, and what happened was when I was, because if you put this, accept this new position as the Health Service Director, if you look at the chart, they're highlighted in the glow purple are the positions that will be reporting to that, to the new position. And that's when I noticed that a Pat D would be supervising a Pat D. So this was the same org chart that was sent to WIS, so I'm not really sure how it got missed, that kind of thing. But that's how it was brought to, you know, my attention here just recently, so.
Counselors, comments, questions about this or thoughts? Counselor Wiltz?
I would be very interested in hearing from the Commissioner, what you think about this.
Sure. So I would just say that delaying this, I'm, I think would be challenging, this just because it's, it is a really important role, especially as we move into 2025, with getting our core services on, you know, accelerated, getting these new other positions that have now been filled, and getting that strong support system as a manager in the department. I think that it's really crucial. So I'm just worried about delaying that. And I don't have any objection to making, you know, additional changes or modifications if if that needs to be done, but can that be done with still trying to move forward with this new position? Because we still have to post it for 30 days before I can even begin to recruit and fill it. I need an RN, and that RN is crucial to support our STD work, and that's so that we have an RN who can go out and do field injection treatments with our DIS. And that credential is really important for our department in this position as well.
Other comments here, Counselor McKim.
Yeah, I'm inclined to go along with Ms. Kelly's recommendation there and move forward, and at the same time then continue an evaluation of the other of the other positions that may have some overlapping duties. I, you know, this whole idea of the of a position and a certain classification can't supervise somebody of the same classification, that's called grade stacking in the in HR terminology, by the way. And, you know, I, the, I know the federal government used to have a blanket prohibition on it, and just this last year rescinded that blanket prohibition, saying that it is, grade stacking is appropriate in certain circumstances if it can be justified. And I'm kind of, I'm kind of just, that's made me think about, I've just been thinking about that recently, and I'm inclined to kind of apply that same logic to this situation. And I understand that she does need to have this position available, and the Health Department needs this position available, and I think public health has never been more important. So my my inclination is to approve it, but then begin the review of the of the other position.
And I would also like to just remind councilors that when we updated all the job descriptions in 2021 to 2022, we did away with all of the in-grade supervisor positions. So that's why this kind of, you know, just in-grade meaning a Pat D, you know, supervising a Pat D. And then that's why it was, you know, I thought, well, we need to, you know, council needs to know about this, and how should we, you know, eliminate it, so.
And I think you're absolutely right, as a general practice, to avoid it. I'm not, I'm not saying we should just open the floodgates, but I think there may be times in which it's it's necessary. And even in this case, you know, I think the benefits of moving forward more quickly outweigh the costs.
Thank you. Other counselor comments? Counselor Crossley.
I guess just as a clarification, this wasn't any wrongdoing of the Health Department. This is just a WIS oops moment.
Um, I believe, yeah, it was kind of like a combo because when I was working with Kelly, but sorry, I say that all the time. I have a cousin named Kelly, so I, you know, sorry about that. When I was working with Lori on this and trying to get the org chart correct, she said, well, if we get this new position, I want to move these, these, and these under here, and it didn't dawn on me to even look at that. So, yeah, so, and then, so. So, yeah, so, and then, so I didn't catch it at first, she didn't catch it, and neither did WIS, so.
Essentially, if we, for some reason, decided to, like, would some of this have to be kicked back to WIS or in PAC?
Yes, I believe along with Molly, we need to work with Ms. Kelly again, and we need to remove some of the supervising duties that are in there. Yes, it may come back as, you know, the classifications are dropped, but we, it, historically, we don't penalize the employees. They become outliers, stay at that, you know, wherever they're at until their salary catches up to whatever it is. So they become an outlier.
And for clarity, when Ms. Shell was referring to a classification change, I think she's referring to the Population Health Manager positions. So this, we don't anticipate the Health Services Director position classification changing. It's when we look at the positions that it's supervising that's at the same grade level that those, the, I'm calling them subordinate, but they're not really, positions may change in classification.
It just seems like there would be a huge delay in a lot of this going forward, essentially because there is no PAC meeting if it needs to go back to PAC next month?
There's a tentative December meeting scheduled.
Yes.
This is the reorg that will never end, I gotta say.
That's the gift that we given you on your way out.
And, and we also, we can't, there's not a PAC meeting in January, but once we know who the new PAC members will be, we can make a meeting in January. So we just don't normally schedule one because we don't know who's gonna be that person.
And I'm gonna throw in the caveat, even if we start looking at the Population Outreach position, I, there's no way we're gonna have it done for the December PAC meeting. I know WIS is already working on one big project for us, and they didn't anticipate having that project back until the end, up to the beginning of 2025. So I can't imagine them being able to squeeze this one in.
What?
No, you're good. I was just gonna say, it sounds like time is, time is money for this. So, yeah, but I'm in favor of what Counselor McKim was talking about earlier.
Who else?
Thanks, yeah. So the possible overlapping jobs that this position would supervise? I'm confused by that. When was the last time those jobs were reviewed? And why would they have overlapping?
When we, so the Health Services Director position is a new position created. When we looked at this job description, we didn't look at the Population Outreach Manager position to cross-reference it. It's something that we should have done, but it didn't happen.
So the, oh wait, so the overlapping is between the new position and?
The population health.
That's not what I read it. Lori, I'm sorry.
Hold on. She can talk and I will.
I think I was curious to learn a little bit more too about the overlapping duties that are being discussed because if I'm just gonna talk about from a broad scale of the Health Department and all the positions, honestly, in my opinion, coming into this position, a lot of the positions did have some of that same language. For example, all of our senior positions. So we have three senior environmental positions. We have a senior community health specialist. Well, when the two manager positions were created, it used the same language. So we have senior positions who are essentially supervisors with some of that language, and then managers on top of that with some of that same similar language. So I think number one, there can be a little bit of confusion there too with reporting structure and some of that duplication and, and just language. But number two, if we are talking about overlapping duties, to some extent, that's what we're looking for, because we're looking to build in some of that cross-training and have cross-coverage. So you have to be able to have a supervisor who is overseeing other employees who can step in if needed in the event that that position is vacant, or someone is out for a long period of time, and still be providing those services to the public. So it's challenging, but to some extent, there are gonna be overlapping duties. But as far as who is supervising who and what they are supervising, I think could be flushed out.
You think it's a good idea to have a review of these position descriptions, just to clarify?
Well, I think that I would like to see what they are terming as overlapping duties because when I looked at the new position when it was created, I don't see that. The only overlap that I would see would be a plain language of supervising, participating and interviewing and recruitment. That's the only duplication that I would see.
I guess the reason I have a pause is because it seems like every time something gets a little bit difficult, we run to WIS and pay them to do more work for us. And while I, I do support having experts review our positions, we just created this, we, you know, this other position, the Population Health one. So it's not old.
It was a, it was a standalone department. So that's why that population, or I don't want to say department, division. And so the Population Outlook Person, sorry, I don't know what I did with my. This whole gray section was a standalone. So that's why it was a PATD. It mirrored, you know, the other director positions, this kind of thing. But when the other one was created, it would, Ms. Kelly then asked for it to be under, she felt like that it needed to be under the Health Services Director. So that the, the Population Health Outreach does have, you know, the hiring and, you know, recommendations and stuff, which if you look at the Senior Health Specialists like wastewater and stuff, they don't have that particular kind of duty. And I think that is some of what WIS was saying were the, some of the overlapping duties. So. And that's, I think that's what the memo said, but. But yeah, at one point, this was a standalone division within her, and then that's why it was a PATD along with a PATC, you know, and it, you know, this kind of thing.
We had to clarify if the Population Health position is ceding some of those duties to Health Services Director. So that makes sense. Okay, all right. So I think I agree with Counselor McKim. Thank you for walking me through that. I still just wonder about how efficient we are with that, the con, yeah.
This end of it.
But that's, that's, that's a separate issue. And I, yeah, I think this position needs our support to kind of help round out the organizational chart that they're working toward.
And I'll, I'll add in here, I think I'm the only counselor that's not commenting on this, it sounds to me as if the consensus on councils to move forward now and come back if we. Any, anything that needs to be clarified here? One thing I always will say is my observation of WIS is that they, they can hit the side of the barn pretty accurately at times, but occasionally there's practical detail that doesn't always make sense. And I, I saw this firsthand in the election supervisor position. I saw it also down in the assessor's office. When I, I kind of understood after a few discussions that they were believing there was one person who would do this GIS function in the entire Monroe County. And I was like, friends, that's like email anymore. That's like, Jeff's got email, Trent's got email, Molly uses email, they're all happy. And so I always want to temper the WIS turn to with, down on the ground, you gotta make sure what you're doing, or you get stuck in the floodwater. So I, my vote will be to move forward on this as well and try to get this done. All right, any other comments from counselors? All right, it's fairly discussed then. Let's go to public comment. If you have any, come forward in the Natu Hill to the podium or raise your hand on teams. All right, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, we'll move on to item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to amend the reporting structure of five job descriptions as outlined on the agenda due to the creation of a new Health Services Director position.
Second.
And Ms. Kelly, now is this us adopting that org chart?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So this essentially just changes some of the language with the approval of the Health Services Director of the reporting structure since the majority of these, well, since these positions would be currently reporting to me, then that just essentially amends that they would be reporting to the Health Services Director position.
Other comments, questions on this end? All right, seeing none? Let's go to public comment on this. If you've got comments, come forward in the Natu Hill to the podium or raise your hand on teams. All right, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
On behalf of the Board of Health, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Dr. Ryderman. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thanks for the Thanksgiving gift.
All right, let's move on to item 15.
Counsel, I move to approve the request for an additional appropriation and fund 1,000-0061, general fund, counsel, and the amount of $500 in the services category.
Second.
All right, this is Michelle.
Um, I am requesting an additional $500 in our travel training line. This is due. I've made all of the in-house transfers and category transfers that I could possibly do. So this is just to help us. We've had like a couple conferences like in October and November, and so this is just to help us.
All right, other comments, questions on this end? Counselor Wiltz?
I just wanted to make sure that we, I believe this is the case, but you did, we did add money into training travel for next year because of this, this anticipated shortfall because we're sending more people, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, great, thank you.
Good. Other comments, questions? All right, seeing none? Let's go to public comment. If you have any, come forward in the Natu Hill to the podium or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none? Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, we'll go to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request to amend the 2025 salary ordinance and the funds outlined on the agenda to reset the part-time hourly range rates due to the 2025 COLA increase.
Second.
All right, Michelle?
Yes, so I asked departments to review the salary ordinance for 2025, and due to the timing, there were people out of the office. The probation office didn't really get a chance to look at it before it was adopted, the original, original version. So this is to correct their part-time hourly ranges with regards to the COLA increase because they try to keep those kind of current with how they pay their part-time employees. So they also give them that increase as well. So these are all of the funds that pay out personnel, and so this is their new rates for 2025.
Questions, comments from counselors?
I have absolutely no problem supporting this. Makes sense to me. But in my mind, it begs the question, once again, about the floor of our part-time range being low and not maybe, having been increased since we did this a few years ago?
I think, or 23?
I mean, I get that, that, you know, it doesn't have to get to be changed every, it is, it is arranged, but I would like to maybe put that on the radar of my council colleagues that, you know, 14 isn't considered, yeah, it's low.
Counselor McKim?
I mean, I, I agree, but of course, they don't have to use the $14. They don't have to hire somebody at 14. This just gives them a range that they can, that they can use. I guess in the, in hourly wages, I'd be inclined to, you know, defer to the department head if they have issues with hiring, you know? If they're not getting candidates, then, then the range is probably wrong. But, I mean, I certainly agree, $14 is low, you know? If they came and said, make it 16, I'm fine with that too. Saying they don't have to use the, the bottom of the range.
That's, that's correct. And that's why it's not an emergency, you know? There, there's certainly, probably, I would guess, very few positions, especially in this department, that are paying 14. And that would be the first step in sort of re-examining that, that range is to see, okay, how many folks are employed now at 14? I remember when we did this a couple of years ago, we had, I think the bottom of some ranges was nine. So, I mean, we've, we've made some efforts and just, you know, we'd like to make sure that we don't lose, you know, lose track of it.
One, one thing I would say, and I, this is a really good point, Counselor Wiltz. One thing I would say is I think a strong area, and I'm gonna actually lift this from a comment Counselor Crossley made to me on a related matter. I think the Long Term Finance Committee probably needs to be, not to still a little bit, but it probably needs to be looking holistically around salary. I think this last year, we got hung up on jail funding issues, and that sucked, rightfully so, it sucked the air out of everything else. But I think salary is an important thing. And I think the secondary to this is looking holistically at sometimes areas where I think people don't talk. There are probably, I'm not gonna say probably, there are elected officials and department heads that don't always walk in here and say, I'm worried about fill in the blank D, and I can't always keep that filled, but, and those people are a little bit like me, and what they do is they kind of eat their stress and don't say anything, and they walk around with a limp. I think others come in and they talk very boldly about those things, and rightfully so. I think one thing the Long Term Finance Committee could do in the new year particularly is look at some of these areas and make sure that we're not doing what WIS was actually designed to prevent us from doing and playing favorites. Because there's always a good reason for a favorite. I never heard anyone, department head, elected official on this end or any other, ever make a case for an increase or a change that didn't sound wholeheartedly strong. And I think that that's something that we could look at, and these positions are ones that could get left behind. One thing is, Ms. Brady would be good about telling us if there were vacancies, but if she weren't in that job, will the next person, or will they feel the pressure of, I'm not Linda Brady, and I'm in there for one to two years in service, and I better be quiet until I get my way around here a little bit better? And so I, I always think about those things. Sometimes it's the quiet ones that you have to wonder about too. So anyway, I think that that could be something that we look at there. And that committee did good work, I'm not just saying it because I was chair, but that committee, and because Counselor McKim was on it with me. But that committee did good work this year in talking about stuff that we had not talked about, that Counselor Wiltz fairly said we should be talking about when she was in my role. So I think that that could be something, if that makes sense. So, I think that that could be something, if that makes sense. Other on this item? All right, let's go to public comment. Maybe the public's got some thoughts on this. Come forward to the Natu Hill, or raise your hand on teams. Before we vote on this, let's make sure that Long-Term, that didn't drop off with the next crisis that comes up because that's how it happens around here, or something trashcan fire starts, and we lose sight of something like this that we need to be watching. All right, let's go to a roll call vote then.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, let's go to Item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request to amend the MS4 Coordinator job description to the Stormwater Program Manager, along with any other reference to the MS4 Coordinator title.
This is still Michelle. You're doing many duties tonight.
So, council recently approved a stormwater technician position, and as well as updating the job description, it was the MS4 Specialist, I believe, to an MS, to a stormwater specialist. So, during budget sessions, council approved changing the MS4 Coordinator position to a Stormwater Program Manager. So, as I was updating the job descriptions, I noticed that we needed to change that job title in the job description, but there was also some other MS4-related job titles within that, which were outlined in that job description. So, this doesn't have to go to WIS. This is just saying, let me make those changes, and we can get that out, back out to the Highway Department. So, it's correctly titled.
WIS goes, [whistle]. Counsel comments, Counselor Wiltz.
Yes, I would just ask, I'm assuming that you've reviewed this, the changes with our Highway Director?
Yes, I did. I sent her a copy and showed her what changes I was going to make, and she approved them.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, I just see these as technical corrections to the nomenclature.
Any for the comments? Seeing none. Let's go to public comments. If you have them, come forward to the Natu Hill, or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Item 16 is ARPA. We have nothing on ARPA, right? Looking to the auditors on the table.
We do have an unappropriated balance of over $92,000. I believe the intention was to appropriate that to the SEPTIC Assistance Program. If you wanted to do that tonight, you can, or we can wait for a future meeting.
What's the will of the council?
I mean, we can do it tonight if we have everything kind of lined out, and you know what line you want us to, or would you prefer that we do it at the next meeting?
It's completely up to you guys. We will have to address ARPA at a future meeting because we have some projects that are wrapping up that we do not know what their ending values. So, if you wanted to wait and do it all in one fell swoop, we're happy to do.
That 92 could become 96, or 1012.
Yeah, minus one weight.
My brain's gone. All right, let's hold it then. Counselor Crossley.
Yeah, I was just going to say, like, the end of the year is near, so we, if we push this to another meeting, which, I mean, sounds like that's something that we need to do because we might be unsure, we need to maybe in next meetings, have done with ARPA because we have to encumber everything by the end of the year, and funds have to be spent down in 26 to the penny.
And we already have it on our schedule advertised for the next two meetings as well. So, we're covered for both meetings.
Okay.
For the 10th and that so-called 17th backup meeting.
Which we want to get done on the 10th. So, it sounds like we really just need to deal with this on the 10th, right? Unless we want to have a last-minute Christmas party.
10th it is, and that will be it for ARPA from there. And so, do we need to continue this on here? No?
No, I've already got it advertised.
Because it's advertised.
So, no, it does not need to be tabled.
Awesome. Let's move on then, off of 16 to 17, council comments. Counselors, do you have any comments? Now, our 18-minute meeting, that's not too shabby.
Sorry, my friend, Counselahawk, isn't here to smack me, so I'll make a brief comment. You know, I was going to say, we got, some of the school board members had invited us to the school board meeting that happened last Tuesday, and it was very enlightening to listen to a lot of different conversations. I know in this community, one of the biggest things that I've always wondered about and never understood why it's taken so long is the conversation of redistricting. And I'm a Templeton mom through and through, I'm a Templeton Tiger mom. And so, it's no surprise that, you know, the debate between Templeton versus Childs merger is very contentious at times, and it's been really disappointing to kind of see. And some people are probably looking at this going, why are you talking about that? Because of the simple fact that when we talk about redistricting, I think we have to realize, you know, some of our schools are very segregated in this community because of the type of housing that we do have and we don't have. And I think with the whole CDO conversations that we've had over the past several weeks here, and all the folks that continue to talk about different types of housing, this right here, that conversation, I wish more elected in city and county could really take a look at if you haven't had a chance to, to really pay attention to the conversation because I do think that while, you know, we are here in our lane of county government in terms of county council, but we also fund our priorities, and that's our role here is to do that. So, I would really highly recommend folks to really take a look in that, and hopefully as a challenge to us to figure out how we can play a role in making sure that we can have different types of housing in our county and better hopes for our schools to be desegregated in terms of that. So, I think we all want what we want, but change is hard, and we can make it happen, but we got to push. So, that was, that was a very enlightening conversation, and that's it. I just, well said, thank you for saying that. It's an important thing for us to think about. Sometimes it's easy to get caught up in job descriptions and price, you know, salary ranges, but no, my pause was that I was processing that, and I think we can make changes multiple ends of scales, and I'll just, you know, leave it at that. Thank you.
One of the things I kind of want to add to that is between that discussion where I believe the slated projected three elementary schools to close, which really, when I saw that, and I appreciate the school board reaching out to give us a heads-up on that, when I saw that, it really blew my mind. The evening that that happened, I actually was in an elementary school. I was up in Marlin with some Cub Scouts, talking about county government, and they were quite interested in what we do here. But the closure of three elementary schools is a profound statement, and the fact that, and I'd like to see more on the evidence and the logic and all that. I'm not saying it's right or wrong or whatever, I just, I'd love to see more of that, I'm going to follow up. But that's a profound statement on a community that has been under the impression that it is growing so fast that the buttons are popping off of the shelf. And that made me think in this role as a counselor about what we're existing with on two fronts. Number one, the people that we service, serve and make sure are okay, and then the revenue that we need to support that. And those, beyond the strong considerations that Counselor Crossley has brought up, those considerations, if there is population changes, if there's demographic type change, all those things mean that the work of this county are similarly going to be impacted and affected for some time. And that can mean a lot of things. Now, when I look up to the north, and I usually don't like to speculate on the legislature because I just have made many comments about how that can be a problem, but when I also hear about things like property tax, everything changing, or anything else changing, or something else, something that dreams up and calls Legislative Service Agency to turn into a bill tomorrow, this county could be facing a lot of changes, both to revenue it needs and the services it offers, not to mention nationally, there's a lot going on, too. And I just think that we need to keep our eyes to, by the way, I was very glad our staff, I believe, are getting some additional training on following the legislature and how, what's going on out there with this because they're going to have to figure that out with us, too. And there's just, there's a lot underway with that. So, any other council comments? Three elementary schools is profound. That's big. Well, with that note, thanks to everybody for a quick meeting tonight. I hope that we got this done for the public, for all the folks out there on break, celebrating time with family. Be safe out there, and make sure that you check out this Friday, the lighting of the canopy just outside our doors here. Come by and see our tree. It is beautiful, and all are welcome in the Monroe County Courthouse. And with that, we are adjourned.